Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us at our Joint School Board Legislative Delegation Workshop. Look forward to getting a lot of work done today and hearing what your priorities and issues are. And I want to thank Palm Beach Gardens, the city of Palm Beach Gardens, for allowing us to host the event here. And what a great facility. It's I don't think I've ever seen a more lovelier facility for a municipality.
Come to Wellington.
Wellington. Okay. But this one is just outstanding.
Welcome to my district.
Okay, thank you, Representative Roth. So let's see, I want to welcome the delegation members and ask you guys to introduce yourselves, and ladies and gentlemen, to introduce yourselves. And we'll start with Representative Slossberg at the end there.
All right, thank you, Chair. I'm Emily Slossberg. I represent House District 91. It's Boca, Delray, and Boynton Beach between Military Trail and the Turnpike. And I have the best legislative assistant that's with me today, Thomas Buma.
Thank you, Representative Willhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Willhite. I represent the 86th District in the Florida House. That's Loxahatchee Groves, Wellington, Royal Palm, Wellington, Green Acres, and Haverhill in parts of unincorporated Palm Beach County. And Representative Slossberg may have a nice Tom here, but I have the best Tom, Tom Valio. And Melissa Santoro. And I appreciate each and every one of you school board members, not because of what you do for our teachers and our kids, but for what you've had to endure this year. I know it's been difficult. No matter what the issues are, what side you're on, it's been difficult for what you've done. So I appreciate you all still being here. Obviously, you can see from the chair's arm, it is dangerous to be a school board member. But he's enduring, and he's still here. So be careful, Mr. Burke, you might be next. But thank you, and I appreciate all of your hard work and service to our community. Thank you.
Representative Roth.
Good afternoon, folks. I'm happy to be here, and I agree with Senator, listen to me. Representative Willhite, yes, we're so happy that you all have done all you could to keep our schools open, keep our kids in school. We're so happy that the MAX mandate is over, and I'm looking forward to participating with you today. I'm District 85, which includes where we are, Palm Beach Gardens, North Palm Beach, Juno Beach, Country Estates, Jupiter Farms, west of the Turnpike, going all the way down, almost Okeechobee Boulevard, on Military Trail, almost all the way to Okeechobee Boulevard, all the way out to Seminole Prats. So I have Ibis Country Club, I have Indian Trail Improvement District, I have Westlake, I have Arden. That makes it 20-mile bend, folks. I think I got a pretty good-sized territory. But as a native of Palm Beach County, I always tell people, we live in the greatest county in the greatest state in the greatest country in the world. Welcome to paradise.
Thank you, Representative Rick Roth.
Senator, John Carter, you waved, sir. Tried to forget you twice, sorry, John Carter.
Okay. Senator Berman.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Senator Lori Berman. I represent District 31, which is the heart of Palm Beach County. It goes from Delray to the south, to Lake Worth to the north, from the ocean to the Turnpike. And I second my colleagues' sentiments about all the great job you all have done in a very, very difficult year, and I'm excited to have this meeting with you all today.
Senator Polsky.
Thank you very much. I'm Senator Tina Polsky, District 29, southern Palm Beach County, Boca, Highland Beach, yeah, she better say that again, Boca Highland Beach, western parts of Delray, Boynton, Lake Worth, Wellington, Belgrade, South Bay, and I also represent parts of Broward. I have my great staff here with me, J.J. Pescadlo and Daphne Fernandez. And Senator Berman appreciates her staff, Abby and Daniel.
Thank you for doing it for me.
And thank you all for being here. I look forward to our conversation.
Did you want to say anything else, Senator?
That was perfect.
You got it? Okay, great. I'm State Rep. Mike Caruso, District 89, who runs from Boca Raton all the way to Singer Island, about 37 miles along the intercoastal and the ocean. I'm proud to represent them and honored. And I want to welcome School Board Chairman Frank Barbieri, Superintendent Burke here today. I know we've got a lot to do. Before we get started, I wanted to thank the school board for your hard work, your tenacity, your courage to protect our children. And I know that was paramount on all of your minds. I talked to Frank, Chairman Barbieri, on a regular basis, and I know that's where your hearts were. And I appreciate your openness, because you changed, you turned at the end there, and you know, changed course. Because the open-mindedness, I appreciate that. And I'm sorry that you had to go through such turmoil, you know, but thank you for your service. Really appreciate that. I guess I'll turn it over to, oh, I did want to say, we've got a hard close at 3:00 today. We've got a lot to do. So, members, if we could make sure we keep our questions short, to the point, and/or comments, okay? And that being all said and done, I turn it over to Chairman Frank Barbieri.
Thank you, Chairman Caruso. Thank you all. It's nice to come into a meeting when people aren't screaming at us, so maybe I should have waited to say that at the end of the meeting, because I never know how they're going to turn out, but.
It's not over.
But thank you. It's not over yet. But I appreciate the fact that you recognize we were in a very difficult situation. You know, I firmly believe that, and I know my board members believe that, we were acting in the best interest of our children and our schools when we did the things we did. And I'm glad that the pandemic seems to be waning now, and hopefully it'll stay that way, so we can get back to what normal should look like. I'll ask each one of my colleagues to introduce themselves. I was going to go by district, but since you're all scattered in different order, if you would start with Dr. Robinson, would you please introduce yourself, and then we'll move on down the line.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Deborah Robinson, representing District 7, which I like to call the Urban Corridor. My district goes from Lake Park to Delray, for the most part, east of I-95. I will also add that I have been 21 years serving on this school board, and I'm a retired physician. So I am resisting the urge to respond to any comments about the pandemic. Thank you.
And good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you to the delegation for all that you do for the school district of Palm Beach County. I'm Marsha Andrews, school board member, District 6, starting to the east at Lantana and the Turnpike, and going deep to the west, Wellington, Royal Palm Beach, Loxahatchee, all of the acreage, Westlake, Arden, all the way to South Bay and Canal Point, Belgrade, just working for students. And it has been a year that we've had to tussle, but it was all about the children, keeping them safe. So thank you for your support and your kind words today.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Whitfield. I represent District 4 in the school board. So that covers, if you look on your sheet, we actually gave you a handout. I am the pink one, which is all Palm Beach Island and kind of goes west to Military Trail, Delray to West Palm on the west side. I want to say thank you, Representative Caruso, for your kind words. That was very, very sweet of you, very, it has been a very long year. I know that there's been a lot of division, and I am eternally hopeful that we can come together as a community. This community means absolutely everything to me. I'm raising my two girls here. They're, one is in our schools, and one is too little to be in school, but she will be soon. And there's nothing more important to me than having a place where she can grow up and feel welcomed by her community, and I hope that we can do that for all the children in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alexandria Ayala, proudly representing District 2 on the Palm Beach County School Board. That encompasses the central parts of Palm Beach County, including West Palm Beach, Palm Springs, Lake Worth, Cloud Lake, Haverhill, Lake Clark Shores. I look forward to having a robust and informed discussion today about our session. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara McQuinn. I am the orange part of the map, District 1. And so I share with, I share municipalities with Representative Roth and with Senator Powell. I meet Mrs. Andrews east to west. We have that border together, so picturing the Jupiter Farms area, the communities of Ibis and Ballin Isles. Then I go north to the county line, Palm Beach, Martin County line. So I have Jupiter, Toquista, Jupiter Inlet Colony, Juno Beach, North Palm Beach, and Palm Beach Gardens. I am delighted to be here. I've learned a lot in five years now on the board, and it's wonderful to know that while we have sometimes been on opposing sides of different issues, that when you walk in, every face I see, we're smiling at each other. So thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I am Karen Brill, Vice Chair, and I represent District 3. And I would like to just start off by saying thank you for your kind words, and just add that what gets me through the meetings and gets me to understand, most importantly, is that the most precious and important people on this earth, to parents, are their children. And education is our future, so I am proud to serve. And even with all of the difficult discourse, I know that we are making the right decisions to keep our children safe. I represent mostly the unincorporated area. I have a little teeny-tiny piece of Green Acres. I'm west of Military Trail, and I have Cobra, for those of you that know the western area, Delray Alliance, and a little bit of the West Boca Community Council. So other than a few streets in Green Acres, I don't have any municipalities. Thank you.
As you know, my name is Frank Barbieri. I represent District 5. My district is easy. It's the city of Boca and the area of West Boca. My boundaries are the Broward County line, the ocean on my east, the Everglades on the west, and Clintmore is the line on the top of my district across the north. Did you want to do the pledge for?
Did you want Supervisor Burke, Superintendent Burke, say a few words?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mike Burke, Superintendent. I have the privilege of representing the district, the whole district, from Boca to Jupiter to Glades and to the moon and back, working with all of our board members to best meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
And now if I could ask everybody to stand for the pledge, which will be led by Representative Roth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Representative, and turn the gavel over to Chairman Barbieri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our objective in today's meeting is to have you all understand the priorities that the board has set, and ask for your help in making sure that whatever bills come up that might impact those legislative priorities, that you help us overcome any obstacles that might be in the way. Today, the Superintendent will be presenting those to all of you, and we encourage you to ask all the questions that you need to ask. And certainly, the seven of us also will be available after today's meeting for any of you. Often, I get calls from Representative Willhite, and I welcome calls from the other legislative delegation members, as my colleagues do. So if any questions come up, even when you're in Tallahassee and you need to get ahold of us, please feel free to call. Any one of us can help you with any issues that you might have with respect to our priorities and why they're there. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to the Superintendent.
You may.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon again. And I just wanted to thank the delegation on behalf of the board and I. We really appreciate this opportunity to get to share with you our legislative priorities and have this dialogue. Real first, I just wanted to show you this slide. I want to remind everyone, we've been wearing face coverings for about two years, so I want everybody to see the beautiful smiles that all of our board members have. Trust me, they're still there. All right. So this is our kind of district at a glance. Lots of facts on the page. I'll just pull out a couple. We are the 10th largest in the nation, so we have about 167,000 students in our district-operated schools, and then you've got another 21,000-plus in about 50 charter schools across Palm Beach County. Our graduation rate hit an all-time high at 94.4%. That was a little boosted, because there was some relaxation on the FSA test requirements going through the pandemic that allowed some of our seniors to graduate, so that may not stay quite that high. And we're going to talk a little bit more about graduation in a minute. A couple of things that really proved to be critical. You see, we have 11,000 interactive smart panels, and the penny sales tax in Palm Beach County that we passed in 2016, along with the county and the municipalities, paid huge dividends. That was part of our classroom technology effort. And so we were well along in deploying those interactive smart panels. And then when the pandemic hit in March of 2020, we expedited the rollout. So by the time we started the following school year, we had one in every classroom. And as we had to make that quick pivot to distance learning, that gave us the camera, the microphone, the big screen, so that, you know, we could do the best in distance learning. And without that, I think that we would have been hard-pressed. But that really proved to be important, along with the one-to-one student device issue, which we expedited. So we weren't quite there yet, but we bought about 80,000 Chromebooks, and we ordered early, because those were hard to find at the onset of the pandemic. So we were pretty proud that we were able to get that accomplished for the start of last school year. And now that's our standard. Every student has a device. I will tell you, maintaining that standard is a challenge. The devices do get broken, and, you know, accidentally, we don't have a lot of theft or vandalism, but it's something just, you have to, now, once you get that standard, you have to keep it, and you have to replenish, and the devices age out, and there is some wear and tear. But that's going very well, and it's proved to be critically important. And it also helps level the playing field, where before, we may have had students that had their, you know, their laptop, and others that didn't have, that weren't that fortunate. So now, every student can take a device home, catch up on their homework, do whatever they need to do. This is just an overview kind of table of content slides, so I'm going to skip ahead, but this just lists out our priorities. I'm going to go ahead and just kind of jump into them one by one. Local control, we'd like to have it. You know, local control is critically important when we run into an emergency such as a pandemic. And we really feel like the local school board and Superintendent need to be able to be nimble enough to act responsively to whatever crisis may fit, you know, hit the local community, whether it's a hurricane, pandemic, what have you. We feel like that's something, you know, the ability to maybe to have to pivot to distance learning. You know, I recall one storm where hurricane that caused a lot of flooding in the acreage area, and we were able to reopen our entire district, except for a handful of schools out in the acreage area, because the water had just risen, you know, over the berm. And we didn't have the technology in place at that point, you know? So we were sending home paperwork and doing the best we could. But a situation like that would be ideal to be able to say, okay, the school's been flooded, what have you, let's pivot to distance learning, let's leverage this technology and this whole skill set that we've developed now with our teachers, with the Google Classroom, you know, posting their, all their work online, along with, you know, the agenda. So that's where that type of local control could really pay dividends for us. Moving ahead, the, we have, mental health needs are going to be really important for us. I mentioned graduation rates. At the top of the slide there, you'll see mention of the Concordance Score changes. Just recently, the Concordance Scores, what that is, is if a student maybe doesn't pass the FSA to graduate, there was options where they scored well enough on the ACT or SAT exam, we could graduate the student. And now those cut scores have risen pretty significantly. So it's, we've, you know, there's a higher bar now to graduate. That's okay. We're all for more rigor and, you know, higher standards, but the timing of it's problematic. The COVID, you know, slide, the unfinished learning, the impact to our students is real. You saw test scores across the state fall this year. Math fell roughly about 15% across the board. English language arts about 4% to 5%. And when you think about it, teaching math over a computer is difficult. You know, the teachers are usually having kids come up to the smart board, which would have been the chalkboard in my day, work out problems and coach them through it. So the concern here is the standards are getting tougher. At the same time, we're going to be really working hard to catch our students back up and try to get them graduated. So what we're asking for, to be considered, is a one-year delay on that Concordance Score, kind of higher-stakes standard, and recognizing that, you know, this is the last year of the FSA. And FY '23 is going to become like a new baseline year as we move to the best standards. So also, I think that change in standards aligns well with this consideration. Mental health services, you know, we are seeing an uptick in discipline and social-emotional issues with our students. I think that the pandemic experience and perhaps the lack of structure, you know, students may be spending more time on their own. Some of them are having a hard time adjusting back to the classroom and remembering all the kind of expectations for their behavior. And the team is doing a really good job with this. Again, we're fortunate in Palm Beach County. We passed a referendum in 2018 for One Mill that is paying for a mental health professional in every one of our schools. And it also helps pay for tiered levels of services. So we have partnerships throughout the county with mental health providers, so that if we find a student that's, you know, maybe not feeling so well, we can kind of diagnose, triage, and align them with the services they need. And that may take them outside of the district for those services, but we have the funding and the contracts in place. So what we're looking for here is, you know, not every district is as fortunate as Palm Beach County to have that referendum. Our referendum, you know, may not last forever. We would like to see more funding put into the mental health aspects of education, because it is proving to be critically important. And just, if you think about it, a student really can't begin to learn if they don't feel safe and they're not feeling like kind of emotionally, you know, secure. So, and then the last one on the page there is dual enrollment. This changed several years ago, where the cost was shifted to the school districts. It's a good program. We support it. It would be nice if we could get some, you know, funding to help support that dual enrollment, where it opens up opportunities for our kids to go to Palm Beach State or FAU, graduate with a lot of college credits, you know, already in the bag, you know, before they even head off to school. All right. Okay. And then also, you know, each year, it seems like there's some legislation that gets batted around that could impact our school board, from term limits to stripping of salaries to what have you. And so we're just mindful, we want to monitor that legislation. We feel like the local school board, as you mentioned earlier, it's not an easy job, you know? They dedicate a lot of time and energy to representing their constituents, and we feel like that should be honored. Distance learning. So I mentioned this kind of earlier under local control. But again, distance learning is something that, it's not the ideal. We want kids in our brick-and-mortar buildings. We know that's the best place, and that's where they have the best opportunity to learn. But there may be occasions where distance learning would come in handy. And right now, it's kind of off the plate, because we were granted that authority through a emergency rule that sunset last June. And we'd like, you know, we have applied for an instructional continuity plan through the state that may open the door to this. But, you know, as things get stabilized and we return to normal, I think distance learning might still play, you know, have a role to play. We're not suggesting that we send everyone home again, but there could be, you know, students that have a lot on their plate with sports or what have you, or maybe they have a certain illness that requires them to be home for an extended period. Distance learning could really, I think, help us out. And then VPK, you know, one of our biggest challenges is really our third-grade reading scores. And that's one of our long-term outcomes we really want to see improve, and get more kids to be able to read proficiently by third grade. I think it's just we're recognizing that the earlier you start, the better. You know, I now serve on the Children's Service Council. There would be benefits, you know, if we could put kids in school at age 2, it would be great. And they'd have a much better chance of being ready to read. We're seeing students, you know, come to kindergarten. Some have the benefit of already having a pretty vast vocabulary, you know, they have the ability to read with their parents, or being, getting a lot of additional help, where other students may show up to us, and, you know, it's the first time they're really getting a chance to start that process. So we're all in support, and this, you know, this is not money really coming to the school district necessarily. This could be, you know, the private providers, what have you, through the Children's Service Council, the Early Learning Coalition, but it just aligns very well with our key mission, right? Okay, you know, CFO for the last 15 years, you can't get out of here without talking about a little bit of finance stuff. And I know the local delegation's been very supportive over the years, and I just think it's always helpful to kind of level-set and just recognize where we stand in the country in terms of education funding. We did move up a little bit in the most recent national data, which is the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Florida is at 45th. We had been 46, so we moved up one slot, which is positive. But, you know, we just have to recognize that funding is fairly lean in our state, so we need to safeguard it and hopefully enhance it. One of the things the legislature did last year that we greatly appreciate, with the, you know, the impact to the economy of the pandemic, the legislature saw fit to maintain required local effort. So that required local effort, RLE, that's the biggest component of our local property taxes. And by maintaining it, that brings more money into the pot for education. And as long as we don't scale back on the state revenue, that's a way for the state to bring more revenue into education without raising the tax rate, just really benefiting from new construction or reassessments, you know, or increases in property valuation. I think this year is critically important. When we look what's going on with inflation, you know, inflation's nearing 5%. When we look at the challenge to pay a salary that people can actually live in Palm Beach County on, we really need to think about everything we can do to bring in more revenue. On this slide, it's also mentioned the charter school capital outlay, and I'm very appreciative. The legislature for the last several years has fully funded the charter school capital outlay, which means that protects our local capital outlay millage, the 1.5 mills that we use to maintain and build schools. We've been able to hang on to 100% of that, and that's because the legislature has seen fit to pick up the tab for the charter school capital outlay using the PICO dollars. You know, we've, the district used to receive PICO funds back in the day, and that got smaller and smaller, but at this point, we're happy to hang on to our 1.5 mills and let the charter schools be funded with the PICO, and as long as it doesn't kind of dig into our revenue stream. The FAR retirement system, this is one of these rising costs that's unavoidable. I think it's necessary. I know the actuaries study this, and they look at the return on investment, and they look at the liabilities long-term. So I'm not saying it's not a good thing to increase the contribution to the FRS. I think it's important that remains solvent. It's an important benefit to all of our state employees, but it's a significant cost to our district. And, you know, two years ago, it was about 15.5 million. This year, it cost us another 8 million. As those rates go up, and all I'd ask is that please consider, as those rates go up, if the legislature can put more money into our base student allocation to cover that cost, that's very helpful, because otherwise, we're forced to then immediately turn to, like, starting to make budget cuts. And, you know, just employees, you know, payroll's a big part of our whole budget, so any uptick in those rates has a significant impact. The scholarships, or the Family Empowerment Scholarships, you know, the eligibility has expanded quite a bit in recent years, and we're seeing the impact of that. This year, the state set aside 464 million as part of the FY '22 education budget to help anticipate and deal with any unexpected enrollment growth off the pandemic, or also, you know, these more people taking advantage of these scholarship opportunities. So to date this year, about 406 million of the 464 has gone to cover the scholarships. And just in Palm Beach County alone, we've seen a deduction of about 28.8 million for the Family Empowerment Scholarships. So scholarships are playing a much bigger role in the whole education landscape. You know, we were sitting here, several years ago, we were just really talking about charter schools. Now, the charter schools have somewhat leveled off in their growth, and I think the real growth in the years ahead is going to be these scholarships. Safety measures, you know, in the wake of the Stoneman-Douglas tragedy, there was a sweeping legislation, you know, that brought a lot of requirements to school districts, and we've worked hard to implement those. Again, our referendum in 2018 is what allowed us to double the size of our police force and put a lot of other measures in place. As you look at the budget, we would just ask that, you know, we look at the level of funding, we have a Safe Schools Categorical that is dedicated to this effort. For Palm Beach County, we receive 11.4 million. We spend over 36 million just to operate our school police department. So, and I know that's not unique to Palm Beach County. Most districts are spending quite a bit more on safety than we receive through the Safe Schools Categorical. And then, you know, I mentioned inflation earlier. This chart's a little hard to see from a distance, but for the FY '22 budget, we saw very little change in our per-student funding. It was flat. And if you look at the circled in red, you know, on the far right, that's the last couple of years. So this year, we really didn't see much of an increase in funding. And for next year, I'm concerned, the State Board of Education's legislative budget request was essentially flat funding again. And that trend, I think, is just And that trend, I think, is discouraging because what we're seeing now is we're having a harder time than ever filling positions. You know, we've got a lot of vacancies in our bus driver ranks, custodian ranks, school police, and teachers. And I'm going to dig into that a little bit more in a minute. I think the reason our funding's flat is there may be a mindset that maybe we don't need a lot of state money because we've had so much federal stimulus dollars come in. And that's true. We've seen, you know, a lot of stimulus dollars come in, but those stimulus dollars really don't help us deal with recurring, ongoing operating costs. The intent of the stimulus dollars or the American Rescue Plan is to really address that unfinished learning, you know, to help get our kids caught up, both academically and socially, emotionally. It's allowing us to address the cost of COVID with the enhanced cleaning. And, you know, we put out portable HEPA air filters in all our classrooms, things like that. MERV 13 air filters in all our schools. We're doing all those things along with additional services for our students, you know, with the social emotional work, the academic. We're having more robust summer schools. We have more after-school. You know, we're working on 24/7 tutorial programs. We've added about 350 specialized teachers to deal with reading recovery, algebra supports, graduation coaches. So those dollars are supplemental, right? They're supposed to supplement the regular budget and allow us to do these things that have to be done. So I just, you know, I apologize if I'm preaching to the choir here, but just please know that when you hear about the stimulus dollars, that's an add-on for really extra work we need to do. And so the state's budget, our FDFP, you know, the budget we deal with year in, year out, is still critically important. And, you know, just to draw a few points from that, was very pleased with the governor's efforts to raise the starting teacher salary. And, you know, 550 million now going towards that. It was excellent. I, you know, one of my kids is a new teacher. So that 47,500 absolutely has been a good thing. The only downside of it, and I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, but the only downside is it's created salary compression. So you have teachers that have already invested, you know, five, 10, 15 years into this career. And, you know, it's not an easy career. And what happened there is when the new hires now coming at 47,500, we have teachers that work several years, and there's very little separation in their salaries. So we just kind of mapped out an example on the bottom of the slide of a brand-new teacher versus a teacher that's been with us for five years. You'll see, we have provided raises, you know, we've been averaging over a 3% raise the last few years. And at the end of the day, those two teachers are only about $380, yeah, $390 apart. That's a real-life example. That's a real teacher with five years versus a brand-new hire, and that's just the definition of salary compression. So if there was more money to be available, we'd like to see, if we want to continue to invest in our teachers, to start investing in our, you know, our experienced veteran And I wish it was just teachers. This was on the front page of the Palm Beach Post on Sunday about how the pandemic has changed the job market. And you hear it across all industries, right? This one highlighted a restaurant that was going to start paying dishwashers $15 an hour because they just could not find them. We're seeing that play out across the board, I know, but it really hits home in a school district when you look at our custodians start at 11:09 an hour, our food service workers start at 11:99, and our bus drivers are at 15:08. And we can just no longer, you know, find people to fill these positions. It's becoming very hard. And that's my biggest concern is about being able to attract and retain enough staff to continue operating schools in the manner, you know, we've grown accustomed to, which is you can get transportation to school, you can get a free breakfast, you know, you can get lunch, you can get fed. All those things don't happen without people. So between the salary compression and then just, you know, we have a state constitutional amendment to raise the minimum wage to $15, you know, over the next few years. We really need to get there sooner and then probably even go beyond $15 in many cases to make these jobs attractive enough to fill them. All right.
Superintendent, real quick.
Yes, sir.
I want to let you finish your presentation, but something on my mind real quick about that starting teacher salary. And I know some teachers who start and within five years, they leave the district. What percentage are you seeing, or do you know, or can somebody kind of tell us before we leave, of new teachers who start and within five years, they leave the field?
It's significant. I want to say it's about, I shouldn't guess that. Normally, I would say it's about 30%, but I'm looking for my chief of HR here. Senator Powell. Yeah, approximately about a third within five years. But we'll make sure, we'll issue a formal answer after the meeting today, make sure we got the latest data.
Thank you.
All right. So moving back ahead, oops. Okay. Then the other thing, and this kind of aligns with when I was asking for help with the Concordance Scores, just our teacher VAM scores, recognizing that the COVID had such an impact on our students, we feel like for this upcoming, this current school year we're in, if we could relax the accountability measures on our teachers, which is known as their VAM score, it does tie into their, you know, their evaluation and their pay. You know, we differentiate by state law between highly effective teachers and effective teachers. There's statutory language that describes exactly how those raises must differ, provided we have the funding to provide a raise. But we feel like we need to recognize, much like the state kind of gave districts a pass last year on the accountability, we think our teachers deserve a break this year. And we have a couple appropriation requests that we're going to be bringing forward. One for West Tech, which is out in the Glades community. We've been bringing back West Tech and expanding those program offerings. We're really excited. We just purchased two 18-wheel trucks. We have a growing CDL program, and that's another job where right now it's high demand and it's well-paying. So we're really excited about our opportunity to provide that program, provide solid jobs where people can make a good living. And we're looking for 397,000 to continue to grow that program and to also, we also have a welding program that would be part of that. We also have another appropriation request, something that the legislature's helped us with in the past, along with West Tech, but we have the Historic Roosevelt Project. And these are two community-based projects that would help start building some content that we are planning to, that would go into this museum that's part of our building plan in the next few years. Okay. And then we had a little bit of stuff on the federal front. This is, you know, since we put this together, we've, of course, the infrastructure bill has been passed. There was 100 billion at one point that would have gone to schools to help rebuild school facilities. That did not make it, but there is potential legislation coming. I think it's the Build Back Better Bill, and we're hopeful that maybe they'll revisit the school infrastructure needs as part of that future legislation. We're also supportive of an increase in IDA funding, which helps support our exceptional student education, and it's critically important, and we spend well beyond what we currently receive. And then we also support a universal school lunch for all students. And we've had that both this year and last year with the pandemic. What else? We are, you know, just some things here. As we receive emergency funding, we want to make sure it gets directed to the school districts. We support efforts to reinstitute the J-1 visa program. One of, you know, with the teaching shortages and with more and more students in need of like dual-language programs, you know, in Palm Beach County, the fastest-growing segment of our student population is Hispanic. They're now at 37%, and that's going to continue to grow. So our ability to have teachers that are bilingual and biliterate is critically important. This J-1 visa program would allow us to bring more teachers from overseas that are bilingual. And it's been, research will show that they are the most effective teacher in a classroom when they're able to be literate in both languages. And then some things we're not crazy about on the legislative front at the federal level. We're not looking for monies to be diverted into competitive grant programs. We're really, the federal entitlement programs like Title I and Title II and Title IV are critically important to us. We want those to remain intact and hopefully grow. And then, you know, we've seen some changes in recent years where dollars that typically just went to public schools were diverted to go to private schools, and we want to protect public education. So I think I hit the end of the road there. That was the last slide. Happy Chairman Barbieri to open it up for any questions or conversation.
Okay, members, questions? Representative Willhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Superintendent. I obviously sit as a ranking member on a K-12 Appropriations Committee, so I hear quite a little bit about what you're doing and what you're not doing. Seems like lately more about what they say you're not doing. But I did like to see that the money that's been allocated to you, how much you have requested. Obviously, there's a timeframe between requested and paid is what the state, you get reimbursed. But something that keeps coming up in our meetings and keeps being made a point of is that there's still a lot of funding sitting there for finding missing students. And I'm wondering where you are with that and what percentage you're up to because they keep saying there's, you know, 75,000 or so in the area of students in the state of Florida that are still missing, that are not in some kind of schooling, whether it's virtual, homeschooling, or public school, or charter school.
Right.
I just wondered if you could tell me where you are on that.
Yes, sir.
Or have you requested any money for them to help offset the cost of that?
We have. So just a little background on that, you know, at the time, at one point, I think it was around last January or February, our district was part of a group of superintendents that was convened by Representative Fine on that issue of missing students. And at that point, it was believed that about 80,000 students were missing across the state. It was an alarming number. And that drove a pretty substantial earmarking of some of the ESTR funds towards that effort. So for Palm Beach County, we got about 6.1 million of our funds that were earmarked for that, to relocate, reengage the missing kids. By the time we finished the school year and all the reporting was in, over 60,000 of those missing students turned up in Florida Virtual School or in Hendry County's Virtual School. So they weren't truly, they were missing out of the traditional public schools, but a lot of them turned up in virtual education. And then we sorted through, we've worked our list down, and we're below now about 18. At one point, your enrollment was down 6,000-plus kids. We did a lot of work to find those kids, or they had either moved to another county, another state, another country, private school. At the end of the day, we have about 1,800 students that are truly, don't appear to be enrolled anywhere. And so we continue to work on relocating those students. We've used some of the money to hire social workers that kind of help with that effort. 6 million, though, it's, that's a pretty good sum, you know, and those dollars can last us two years. So I think at some point, we'll probably be requesting that, once we've done everything we can to locate the students, that if we have any money left over, I would ask that the state consider allowing us to transfer into the other bucket for other critical needs, you know, related to COVID and the recovery. So I hope that answers your question. We're still actively engaged. We're looking at different technologies, everything to try to locate the students. Some we think have just jumped into the workforce to help their families. And at this point, you know, it's almost going door-to-door trying to locate them.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, follow.
Follow.
And I would appreciate maybe if whatever you do have or any kind of reports that you could give me that I could use as some backup documentation for, I'm sitting in this committee and I'm hearing these things.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so part of that legislation required us to report to FDOE by September 1st, the whole accounting of the missing students, and we've done that. So I'd be happy to follow up.
Okay. And then, you know, you mentioned an issue, and DOE's obviously addressed it, they've identified it, what they've done to address it is the next issue. And I've brought this up as, we talk about curriculum, we talk about students, missing students, none of that matters if a child's not, can't get to a school or can't get home. And so you started to talk about your critical shortage of bus drivers and where you are in trying to find bus drivers, make them safer, have, you know, whatever it is, have them in the schools longer. And I've talked to some of your staff about it, too, and have some great ideas. But then again, the next thing that, you know, many of us sat in our chamber on February 14th after Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and we allocated a lot of funding and a lot of support for school safety and where you're going to be on your school safety and resource officers, that you, you know, just as the other day was reported, you're 60 to 70 officers short, which means schools are running short right now without, or you're having a contract service. Where are you in filling those two very critical positions of those classifications of jobs within the school district?
Yeah, right. The, we're short about 150 bus drivers, and it's a challenge. We're actively recruiting, we're having job fairs, we're, you know, just, we've added a $1,000 recruitment bonus to try to entice drivers. So we're doing all the traditional things of recruiting. I've reached out to Amazon to see if I could somehow partner with them to use some of their drivers. That didn't bear any fruit, but, you know, we're looking for community support. I'm looking for really, I'd like to be able to improve the pay scale. You know, $15 to get up, think of it as a school, being a bus driver, right? You're up at 5:30 in the morning, you're probably at the bus compound by 6:00. You work till about 10:00 in the morning on the first run. You do three runs, high school, elementary, middle school. You go back to the bus compound, and then most of them wait, and they're not getting paid at that point. They're off the clock from about 10:00 until 1:00. Then they start it up again, they make three runs in the afternoon, and they may get back, you know, 5:30, 6:00 o'clock. So they have a split shift for very low wages. We do provide benefits, you know, health insurance and a pension, but that doesn't necessarily help you pay your bills. So when I talk about being 45th in the country and inflation's at 5%, and our funding for last year and this year appears to be going up 0%, we're in a bind. And I don't have a magic answer on how to manufacture people. We have our chief operating officer, Joe Sanchez, has got a task force he's assembled that includes HR people, communications people, transportation staff. We've reached out to Palm Tran. We are attacking it on a multiple fronts, but I can't sit here today and say we got it figured out. And if somebody's got an answer, I welcome it because it's a tough one to solve.
And one last follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Follow-up.
I'm sorry, I know many of my colleagues will have things, but education is obviously, not just because my kids are in it, but I sit on this committee, but, you know, the first floor amendment I ever filed in the House was for your one cent sales tax and how they were going to take it away from a few years ago from you. And I think some of that money was used for capital and different things, and it seems like maybe a lot of those, has that been allocated towards COVID issues lately? Because there's been a lot of COVID funding for that. So I'm hoping that that money is still being used. And are you still able in improving a lot of your capital infrastructure and stuff for long-term sustainability?
Absolutely.
For our schools?
Yes, we passed the one cent sales tax 2016. We had a project list. It's a billion dollars in basically what we call facility renewal projects. There was some technology, which I mentioned earlier, but we had a whole plan. And then part of that ballot language required an independent oversight committee, which meets quarterly, which is citizen-based, you know, so they review every dollar that's spent. And we have stuck to our plan. That has not been redirected for COVID or anything. That's going, a lot of that money's going things for like roofs, HVAC, air conditioners, repaving parking lots. It's not glamorous stuff, but it was things that, you know, the whole impetus for that sales tax was we saw our capital outlay millage reduced during the Great Recession from 2 mils to 1.5 mils. So we lost 25% of our capital revenue. That went on from 2008, 2009, that period up until 2016, we lost a billion dollars just from that cutting our tax rate. So that was the solution to that problem, to go address our backlog of maintenance, and we're carrying that out.
Follow-up, Representative?
I'll let my other colleagues go, and I'll come back if they're.
Okay, great. Representative Roth.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, sir, Mr. Burke, thank you for those explanations. I'd like to follow up on Representative Willhite's questions. You did mention, I wanted a clarification, you said something about $6 million in federal funds, and I thought you said for student loss. I'm a little confused. Can you explain that again, please?
Yes, I was trying to answer Representative Willhite's question. There was a portion of our ESTR $2, which was the second round of stimulus funds. The legislature, due to that concern about the kids that had just gone missing, they earmarked part of our allocation, 6 million of it, for this effort to go relocate and reengage those missing students.
That was state dollars.
Well, they're federal dollars. But the state decided how to allocate them and said, of your allocation, you know, 6 million's going to this effort. And, you know, any federal dollar we spend, the federal money's passed through the state. So we have to, we apply to the state DOE how to spend those dollars. They approve it, then we actually kind of spend the funds and get reimbursed. So we're going through that process. We have not spent the whole 6 million. I don't, you know, we're spending, we're doing everything we need to do, but I can get in accounting, but I think we've, we're probably still spent maybe a million or two. But we have two years to spend that money. This is going to be an ongoing effort. I'd like to see some flexibility on that money so that once we do locate the students, that we can provide them some supplemental services, you know, that we need to look at students that may have, if they had to jump into the workforce to help support their family, we need to expand our opportunities. family, we need to expand our opportunities so that if they want to get, you know, if we can get them back engaged to get their high school diploma, we need to be more flexible and be able to offer them night programs and things that work around their schedule. So that's one of the things I'd like also see, that let's not just say the 6 million has to go to just finding the kid. Let's have some leeway to the, once we find the student, let's try to help them out.
Okay, can I follow up?
Follow up.
Thanks, thank you, Chair. So I just want to be on record, I think I understand what you're saying when you're talking about maintaining the required local effort. I've dealt with this issue before. I was a state representative, had to deal with the South Florida Water Management District. Then Governor Scott and his cost-cumming efforts kept forcing the Water Management District to roll back their millage rate in order to say that they're not raising taxes. Is that the same situation here?
Exact same issue, yes. There were several years where we were forced to roll back and require local effort. And so it takes a lot of revenue off the table. And I always compare us to the county. The county has had the same millage rate, you know, I think 4.78 mils thereabouts, for nearly a decade. So when, if property values are growing, you know, 5% plus a year, it brings more revenue in. And then that allows them to meet rising costs. So if they're going to pay their sheriff's deputies more money, there's revenue coming in. School districts, when we roll back that millage rate and the funding for students stays flat, we have a hard time keeping up.
So my point is, Chair, my point is, and what happened to the Senator Powell? I wanted him to hear this comment. This is none of those situations where I actually agree that this is crazy. This idea that we're defining tax increase by increasing ad ver lorem property taxes and allowing you to get more revenue because the cost of property taxes goes up because it costs more to, you know, to live in a home and you have valuations. Well, guess what? It costs more for you to do what you need to do. So to me, this is insane. I would love to be able to figure out how we could convince my side of the legislature that this is an issue. And I'll leave it at that, and I'll come back with another question.
Thank you.
I said, say that again.
Common sense.
Thank you. Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question, I'm sorry. I have a question about the FRS money. I thought I read somewhere that the FRS actually had a banner year where they had like 28% return on money or something. Does that help you or make a difference in your, because you said you have a pretty significant shortfall in the FRS money. So if we have banner years, does that play into?
It does help. And we're all, every school district, every government that participates in the pension plan, we're all in the same boat. That's one of the variables. So once a year, typically, the state will have the actuaries study the pension fund. And they'll come out and say, you know, maybe it's 86% funded. And they look at, you know, a 50, 100-year period. So sometimes, you know, even if they're pretty dramatic swings in the investment portfolio, it may not have as big an impact as you think, because they look at it over such a long liability period. But that could help. You know, I'm not sure what next year looks like. The last few years, there was a report that came out a few years back that said they were assuming a rate of return of about 7%. And they said, that's too high. They said it needs to be about 6%. So what they've been doing the last few years is they're just reducing that anticipated assumed rate of return a very nominal amount, but, you know, you, 20 basis points on that rate of return can represent $200 million statewide, you know, such a large pension fund. So, yeah, I think your point, maybe that helps, right? When they do their study, they'll be able to take advantage of the current value of the portfolio, and maybe that mitigates somewhat, but usually just one or two good years in the stock market may not have that big an impact.
Okay. Another question?
Follow up.
Yeah, thank you. And then another question. I love the idea of doing a universal free lunch, and I know it's being done by the federal government right now, and we don't know when that will end. How much money are we talking about if the difference between the students who would normally get the free and reduced lunch and then by going to a full and universal lunch, school lunch, how much, do we know what the difference is on a yearly basis?
No, you know, I think I'm going to need to research that one for you. Let me check, yeah, with our school food service folks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll write that down.
Anybody else? Representative Will Hite.
I mean, if nobody's going to ask questions, I'll take time here. We only have.
Go ahead.
That's why we're here.
So a couple more things I'll bring up, of obviously issues that come up, scholarships and grants. This last year, or a few years ago, the Florida Legislature decided to put a HOPE Scholarship into place where $5 from your car purchase would go to end of fund. And this last year, there was $72 million put into that fund. And a whopping 488 students have taken advantage of that program this last year. That's $2.9 million. If the true problem of bullying is going to be addressed, it should have been addressed on the bullying side, not on the side of just moving a student, because obviously this grant program isn't working. Are you having any issues or finding any issues of parents or students? Obviously, some of the topics of masks and vaccines and all that have become issues of bullying and what kids say to other kids and all those different things. What they hear at home with their parents come to school and they say things, because trust me, my kids say that, they hear those things and they tell me. Are we finding issues in your schools that you've had to address or not been able? And I mentioned this to our staff in DOE the other day about not advertising this program enough, that you could be utilizing this program more of helping your kids or helping bullying any of the schools?
The, well, you know, with the emergency rule that was passed back in, I guess it was August 6th, and it was kind of related to the whole facial covering issue, they actually provided for an expansion of the HOPE Scholarship Program. And some families have sought those applications. We make the application available to them. If they felt like, you know, they didn't, weren't comfortable with our policies, that was an option to them. So, you know, we don't have much control over that. I agree with you that the dollars could probably be more wisely invested in, you know, addressing the school culture and the climate, you know, just giving someone a ticket out of the school system, I don't think necessarily is the answer. The Family Empowerment Scholarships are much greater, and those are funded with FDFP funds. You know, those are dollars that typically used to just be in the funding formula for district and charter schools. So that's the program that is really on the move and growing exponentially each year.
Follow up, Mr. Chair. And I bring this up because a lot of kids maybe don't want to go that bullying route, but as you said, the Family Empowerment Scholarships are being utilized more, as I'm being told, because they're easier to apply for than the HOPE Scholarship, and it doesn't, they're not really having to move, but they're actually getting scholarships. So that is actually happening now.
Well, there's, you're right. There's folks that were already in private schools, and now they have the benefit of picking up the scholarship to help subsidize the tuition.
Correct. And then another issue, and I spoke to Mrs. Andrews just a few minutes ago about is, is we're having to deal with the size of schools, the amount of traffic, the purchase of land. What is your plan? And let me just step back one second, I'm sorry. But congratulations on becoming the superintendent, being named that by your board members. So thank you for that. And I know a lot of the business community and a lot of us are really happy for consistency in having a strong school board superintendent, so thank you. What's your plan for starting to address some of these issues as Palm Beach County grows? We go out and work on economic development and all these other things to bring people here, but your schools still seem to be, you know, some of the same size in some of the locations. You're constricted by land size, but yet more students are coming in and coming in. The cafeteria is still the same size, the library is still the same size, the roads are constrained. What's your plan for starting to address this as a growing, I mean, as a 10th largest school district, as we continue to grow in Palm Beach County?
Well, yeah, I mean, great question. You know, we are, we're keeping up with the capacity for our students, but, you know, there's a lot of growth, as you mentioned, in Palm Beach County. So we have Loxahatchee Grove Elementary School, plenty of room for the kids, but now, you know, Westlake is taken off, so there's much more traffic on the roads. We're not in the business of building highways or roads, so we have to partner with our county and our municipalities to try to address those challenges. And we've done that. Mrs. Andrews has been very involved. You know, at the start of the school year, we had a concern at Wellington High where the cars were just stacking up, you know, on the road there. So we have to work with the county. They look at the traffic patterns, we count the number of cars, how long it's taken to get through the car line, and then we look at ways to mitigate it by, you know, redirecting traffic, maybe limiting access to left turns or right turns or what have you. There's things that they can do. But it takes partnerships, right? I'm not able to just pave another lane down the side of a road. We don't have that type of real estate. We've got some land banked for future schools, and hopefully with good planning, you know, we can have adequate access and roads. But I think the best answer I can give you is it's like collaboration, and that we're willing to collaborate, and that we take an active role. And so far, we've had pretty good luck, because we've got great partnerships.
I yield.
Follow up?
I yield.
Representative Roth.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Then I'll come to you, Senator.
I'm going to take a breath here, because this is a little bit exciting, what I'm fixing to say.
Okay.
Give us a minute.
Everybody take a breath. So I'm going to do, as I ask my people to do when they come into my office, I'm going to explain first what I'm going to talk about, and then I'm going to talk about it. So what I'm giving you is a kind warning, or maybe an invitation to further discussion with the superintendent or with individual board members. I have prepared written remarks, which, because I'm much better at writing than I am talking, ha-ha. So I do want to be very clear what I say, and I've chose my words very carefully. This is controversial, and I don't think you're going to be too surprised. I'm going to talk about critical race theory. This has been an important issue to discuss in school boards around the country and in other states like Virginia. Critical race theory and its concepts, in essence, are teaching our children to be hypersensitive to race and to use racial discrimination in the classrooms. Racial discrimination and segregation should have no role in our public schools, not in Virginia, not in Florida, and certainly not in Palm Beach County. Teaching our children that they are nothing more than the color of their skin prevents them from achieving their dreams as individuals focusing on personal responsibility. So I do have a question. And it's this. Is there curriculum material or teacher training that separates students based on race or teaches students through the lens of racial discrimination in our Palm Beach County schools? Second question. And by the way, I just added this question yesterday. Secondly, is there curriculum material or teacher training that promotes the concept of gender fluidity in our Palm Beach County schools? And I will reiterate what I said at the beginning, that I think it's very important, that we worry about the unintended consequences of our actions. So that's my questions.
Okay, well, there is no curriculum in our Palm Beach County that's called critical race theory. We teach history, and we should teach all of it, you know, the pleasant parts and the things that maybe we're not that proud of as a country. So I know this is a big national issue as people, I think, try to bring partisan politics into school boards. That's part of the reason some of our board meetings have been so raucous, but if this is an invitation to have the conversation, then that's great. Let's talk about it, let's get like the facts on the table. Let's not just let people throw out a term and try to stir up a lot of misinformation to get people excited. Our curriculum hasn't changed really that much, you know? We're teaching history. Do we talk about slavery? Yes. I mean, that's, you know, historical fact, just like the Holocaust. So, you know, that's our, we owe it to our kids to teach them the whole history, and so they can, you know, learn and not be doomed to repeat it. I don't, you know, I could probably work my curriculum people and get you a more technical answer about what books and all of the stuff we have, but, no, we've had this come up. We're not teaching critical race theory, but I also don't want people to get the idea that we are glossing over any historical facts, that we're shying away from some subject just because it may make some people uncomfortable. We owe it to our students to teach them the whole history of our country, and, you know, ideally globally, around the world, and what's transpired. So the other question about gender fluidity, I don't, I believe the answer is no. We teach tolerance, we want everyone to feel welcome on our campuses. And, you know, maybe I'll leave it at there, and if we're welcome, you know, further conversation, because I think if, I think it's easy for people to get stirred up and they hear a term and they think, oh, my gosh, do you know what's going on in our schools? I'm not, I have no reservations about what's going on in our schools. I'm proud of what we're doing. And I think any educated person, when they take an objective look, they would say, oh, yeah, that makes sense, you know, I learned about that myself when I was in school. So, and hopefully, we're maybe we're even doing a better job, you know, than people did 50 years ago.
Chair, can I have a short?
Follow up, Roth?
Short, representative? Short, very short. So I am very glad to hear you say that, sir, I really am. I'm totally being straight up, because that's who I am. I don't know that I totally understand why you're saying that, based on what I already know, but I do want you to understand, please, that parents are paying attention, legislators are paying attention, and there are unintended consequences, because parents, if it goes to a certain point, I'm afraid, and I think you should be afraid, that they will start pulling their kids out of schools. And I'm not saying where, I'm not saying Palm Beach County, I'm saying anywhere in the state of Florida, because I'm a state representative. So I'm just saying as a kind warning, which is what I said at the very beginning, I'm in favor of you teaching public school and getting kids to come back to public school. I graduated from Belle Glade High School. All three of my kids graduated from Wellington High School. I have a granddaughter that's out in elementary school in Loxahatchee, I think it's Frontier. So guess what? I'm a big public school guy, and you guys just need to do your job. And I'm just saying as a friendly warning that I have friends that are doing Freedom of Information Act, they're requesting books, they're requesting materials, they're going to public school libraries, they're getting me information. I want to see it in writing. What people say is going on means nothing to me. What means something to me is seeing it in written curriculum, seeing it in school books. And I'm just here to tell you, we don't want people running away from our school system. We have one of the greatest school systems in the nation, as far as I'm concerned. We have, because we have extra dollars, we have one cent, people willing to agree in a referendum to spend an extra penny for our school system. This is a great county, so let's work together, and this is an open invitation. I have Barbara McQuinn's cell phone number, and we've talked several times, kind of got interrupted by mask mandate and all that, so we quit talking. But, sir, I would like your cell phone after the meeting, and any other board member that would like to meet with me or talk with me, I would love it. This is an open invitation, and I'm excited that we're not having a problem.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Representative, I mean, Senator Powell, Senator Polsky has a question addressing this concern. I'd like to go to Senator Polsky, unless you have something to address the CRT issue and?
I do.
Yeah, okay, then you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get started, I do want to introduce my immaculate staff. I will say that, you know, I would say they're the best staff on this side of heaven, but I would say on this side of heaven and earth, my two attorneys, Attorney Diane Andre Esquire and Attorney Kirsty Maus Esquire. Sorry that I wasn't here earlier. And I did, I had another question, but I do want to get on this topic, because I'm concerned, of course. I know we've had conversations, and along this conversation, this would be around the same thing of, you know, this critical race theory, and of course, I went through the Palm Beach County school system. Graduated Palm Beach Gardens High School. Ms. McQuinn was actually the principal when I started.
Let's be nice.
You know, I didn't finish that long. I would like to know from Representative Roth, because, hey, I got a couple college degrees, and I'm not averse to, I do know that here in the state of Florida, we passed a law in 1994 that indicated that we should teach as a part, as a part of our curriculum in the state, we're supposed to teach African-American history, which might be a surprise, right? But also, I went through high school, college, and then college again to get my master's degree, and I've never heard of the critical race theory until a couple years ago, or maybe last year. So can you explain to me, perhaps, where they're teaching the critical race theory? And, I'll explain this, your interpretation of what it is, because it sounds to me like you may have had a class in. of what it is? Because it sounds to me like you may have had a class in critical race theory to have a complete understanding that maybe the rest of us haven't.
Thank you, Senator Powell. Representative Roth, you're recognized for an answer.
And I just want to remind the Senator that I did make a nice remark about taxes that he missed a couple of minutes ago. I want to give a sense to remind you of that. Folks, you need to understand that I have read material in the state of Virginia because that's something that's, that's in the current news. Do I know what's going on in Palm Beach County? No, I do not. That's why I've had Barbara's phone number and we've met and talked about several issues, but we haven't talked in two months. I think she, one of her excuses for not talking to me was she was moving. So, that's okay. You were, you were moving that day. But the bottom line is, this is just an open inquiry. I have no clue. I do know from Randy Fein, Representative Randy Fein, I did listen to a Facebook conference that he had, I think in July, where Brevard County is doing a lot of things. I do know one fact. Tell me if this is true. Because I write things down so I don't have to remember, right? Do we have an employee named Keith Oswald?
We do.
And what is the description of his job?
Chief for Equity and Wellness.
Equity and what?
Wellness. Student wellness. That includes health services, mental health, all of that.
And what does equity mean in that, in that title? What, what does it mean to be equity? Because I hear, you know, all the public stuff about the difference between equity and equality. So, we don't have to have this discussion now. I just want to have that discussion in the future.
And I just asked that we go through the chair.
Yeah, we can defer that.
Okay. I'm okay answering it.
You're welcome, too.
Okay. Well, equity is not equal. Equity is providing the supports and services needed to hopefully have equal outcomes, to give every student a chance, just like an ESE student may need a little extra help or, you know, to learn how to read if they're dyslexic. A student that's impoverished may need a little more help than the student that has a very affluent family. So, that's when we talk about equity, it's talking about, you know, how do we use our resources? How do we put more money where it's needed to hopefully achieve an equitable outcome and give every kid a chance, you know, to fulfill our mission statement. You know, we want to educate, affirm, and inspire all of our students.
Thank you, Superintendent. Recognize Senator Polsky on, on this issue.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Superintendent. Who sets the curriculum for all the public schools in the state?
Well, we're getting ready to, the state does. We're getting ready to go to the best, the best standards, which is benchmarks for excellence in student thinking. So, that'll be coming next. But before that, we had the Florida standards.
Follow up?
Thank you. So, if there are these accusations, which they are, of, you know, kind of going outside the bounds of what some people think is appropriate, does Palm Beach County change the curriculum from what the state sets for you?
We're held to those standards. That's how we're evaluated. That's the whole accountability system. So, no, we might enhance, you know, I think. We want, you know, kids to have opportunities to go to the Norton or the Kravitz. You know, we're trying to do more than just the standards. But that's the whole framework that we operate around.
Follow up?
Thank you. So, I just, I ask those questions because these are accusations that Palm Beach County or any county in the state is doing something beyond what they're supposed to be doing. We obviously have standards set by the state and it's pretty shocking to accuse a particular district of what I don't even see as wrong, but what obviously some people see as wrong. It just doesn't make any sense to me. It can't be defined properly and you don't have examples of, you know, what you're referring to. And it's a made-up
I do have examples, but not for today.
Okay. Well, to me, I don't think a situation like this, a public forum that you throw out accusations without supporting it. You could have had these discussions privately, but obviously you wanted to make a point. So, I want to make a point that I think is wrong. And I think our district is doing like every other district and following the state curriculum. I also don't think equity is a bad thing or it's become a dirty word. I have no idea why, why we wouldn't want students to have the opportunity to all succeed. So, hopefully, we can put the subject to rest and continue this conversation back to where it should be. Thank you.
And this will be brief.
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out that Representative Roth, he did fail to answer any of my questions. However, I just want to remind everybody in the room that, and I didn't find this out until I went to college, when we study history, it was Dr. John Henrik Clark, who is a black historian, who said that history is a clock that people use to tell their historical and cultural time of day. It is a compass that people use to find themselves on the map of human geography. History tells a people who they are and what they are. It tells them who they have been and what they have been. But most importantly, Representative Roth, history tells a people where they still must go and who they still must be. Now, I understand that, you know, critical race theory has been used in order to trigger certain people to, and I don't live in Virginia, never have. I don't read materials from Virginia because I live in Florida. As a matter of fact, I live in Palm Beach County, Florida, which is different from Walton County, where my family is from, and which is different from Collier County and Miami-Dade County and the middle of Florida, Orange County. It's Palm Beach County. Henceforth, I deal not in hypotheticals, but in what we live with in actualities. I'm raising a three-year-old who will grow up in a mixed culture. And absolutely, my daughter will learn about African-American history, but she will learn about all history because she will know what's culturally appropriate. Yes. In 1954, there was a decision with Brown versus the Board of Education. And at that time, people took their kids out of school because black kids were starting to go to school with white kids. So, if people choose to take their children out of school today because they're being taught about equity, because they're being taught about history of not only one race, but all cultures, then so be it. But we have to live in a society where we learn to get along with each other. Now, what I won't do is kowtow or apologize because every morning when I wake up and look in the mirror, I still see that I don't have a choice. I happen to be black. I can't wake up in the morning and say, this morning, I've chosen to be a horse. So, what we will do is if we can't find the answer to the question and change the response when the question is asked, then we can do what's best for Palm Beach County, not Virginia, and work together. And let's not throw out terms that will incite people because we carry these things within our own hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And I know that Representative Roth wants to continue the conversation, but I want to wrap this, this discussion up. I'll just do it by asking a couple of questions and we'll go from your answer there, yes or no. Do you know of any teachers that are teaching CRT in Palm Beach County school system?
No. I mean, we have 13,000 teachers, but that's not, CRT, again, I want to take Representative Roth. He started his comments with this is, was an invitation to have a conversation. We are gonna hear this term probably unfortunately for the next, up until November at least, right? The election cycle. I see this as an opportunity to maybe clear the air and hopefully educate our community that this is a manufactured term to incite and to try to divide us. Boom. We are trying, we're not doing anything different. We're teaching history and we're not gonna let people come in and say, no, we don't want you teaching that part of history. But we're not doing anything to try to divide kids. We go out of our way to unite our school communities. We have single school culture. We try to do the same type of discipline across the board for all kids. So, we set expectations so all kids know the rules. And we're the furthest thing from trying to divide our community. We, I've gone to dual language schools where we're teaching in English one week and Spanish the next. The, the students I see behave beautifully together and they're happy to be on our campuses. They're more appreciative than ever to be on our campuses after the 18 months we were, you know, where 35% of them never set foot in our schools. So, I don't want to shy away from the conversation because I would rather see Palm Beach County be better than Virginia, be better than the rest of the state, and have an informed citizenry, you know, our electorate that knows that this is really misinformation. It's, it's just a way to try to cast doubt on what we're doing, try to put us, paint us in a negative light. So, no, I don't know any teachers that are running around trying to, whatever critical race theory, I'm not sure what it is, to tell you the truth. We're teaching history and I'll leave it at that. But I'm helped be, you know, I think Representative, Representative Roth, the way he phrased it, if he wants to have the conversation, he wants to learn more, he wants to sit with Ms. McQuinn and I, happy to set it up. And we'll bring in the textbook, you know, textbook experts and have that conversation because maybe it will just do us some good and it'll avoid unnecessary strife.
Thank you, Superintendent. 15 seconds?
15 seconds. I just want to thank you, Superintendent, for those last comments. I'm a little disappointed that some of my colleagues are looking at me like I'm doing something wrong. I said at the very beginning that this was a kind warning. Let's not have, it was no accusation of what you were doing. I was asking a question. So, it's not an accusation. Sir, I, I look forward to the conversations. And I'm just saying to everybody that we want to move forward and do what's best for our children. We want to educate them. We want to give them right history. I have a proud history of my family of having many, many farm managers, all black. So, I'm excited. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on from there. I wanted to recognize there are members here that have been sitting so patiently and Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you so much. I appreciate giving us a chance to, to talk. I just wanted to kind of go back to what I think is the most important part of this conversation, which is how we can best work together. And one of the things that I've found is a frustration this past year, and again, just like Mr. Burke said, not to look a gift horse in the mouth, but the governor has been talking a lot about teacher raises and we appreciate teacher raises. All day long, we appreciate teacher raises. But this past year, those teacher raises were only for a select set of teachers. And what that really does is it sows more discontent with our teachers. We were able, thank goodness, to be able to match those raises, giving $1,000 to all of our employees because we see all the employees as being important. And even some sections of the teachers were not included. So, as you go back to Tallahassee and you're all having this conversation, please keep in mind that we see all our employees as equal and there are many categories of teachers that were not included in those raises in the past. I just want to make two other really quick comments and then I'll let my colleagues talk as well. I'm sure they'd love to. I really think we need to focus on BPK and creating an entire day of learning. These children are so far behind and we have to find ways to get them caught up. So, really focusing on early learning is so important. So, how do we make sure that we're giving every child the opportunity, starting from at four years old? So, because my child was in all day BPK when we were talking about equity. I think that's what we really mean is having a child have every opportunity that their parents would be able to give them if they had everything that they could give. So, I think that's a really important thing. And then finally, I do want to mention on the universal free lunch and the question that was asked. The way that the universal free lunch program works is it's a reimbursement program. So, the amount of kids that participate are how many kids we get paid back for. When we have it be universal free lunch, we take away that stigma. Means that every child just goes and eats. And so, our rates of utilization of the free lunch program have gone up so much during this time, which is so important because we're having children have the opportunity to eat free breakfast, free lunch, and free supper programs within the school district. And that just means that children are getting a chance to eat more. And so, we want to just make it so that every child is able to participate in those programs. And right now, we can across the board, but we have plans to do it even if we can only do it for our large, our largest, highest free and reduced lunch schools. So, we can talk more about that for sure. But I just wanted to throw that in there is that our numbers have gone up since we've done that. Thank you so much and I appreciate you all meeting with us today.
Thank you.
Chair, may I make a?
Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you. We want to hear from all the school board members. So, I propose we extend the meeting five or 10 minutes until we get to hear from everyone.
Why don't we extend it till 3:15?
Okay. Sounds great.
And I, in response to salary compression, I, that's something that I'm hoping that it, it's being talked about. That is the talk in Tallahassee over the last three months. And we recognize that as an issue. And it's on all fronts from our, from our, our prison systems, you know, workers to our school systems, every, all, all parts of our, the state employees. And so, we're recognizing that and I, I'm hoping that that gets addressed this year because we certainly need to. And thank you for that. Yes, member. Ayale.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm excited to talk about issues that actually impact our students. So, one thing that I wanted to talk about was our per student funding, as you may be aware, is still well below the national average. We saw a chart that showed us this 45th, climbing up from a measly 46. The proposal that came out earlier today raises the previous funding by $2 to about $8,000 per student. That amount does not even keep up with Florida's inflation. So, I really want to reiterate and have asked that you all focus on our per student funding because that trickles down. We need resources. And I think all of us here would agree that our main priority is ensuring that students have the best possible opportunities. That funding goes directly to them. I also want to reiterate the comments from my colleague about the increases in salaries. I've had, over the last three weeks, four teachers that I know who have left our district after working with us individually eight, 15, and 10 years, after having master's degrees, multiple education advancements, working with us for decades because they're still making $59,000 a year, $48,000 a year. And brand new teachers are coming in and making roughly the same amount. If we value students, a quality teacher in the classroom is the number one way to ensure they succeed. We cannot attract and retain those people if we're not paying them a competitive salary from other states and other counties. So, I really want to see us go up and get to a place where teaching is a respected profession that is paid what it's worth. And I think over the last couple of years, parents, all of us can recognize what it takes to be a teacher and it is not easy. So, I really request that any change in positive increase that can be made on that amount for them is done. And finally, I just want to end with a more conceptual topic of discussion. I really, the conversation that just took place, stuff like that is distracting us from what we're really here to do. I ask that when you're in chambers, when you're in the floor, when you're making amendments, you stick to what call us. You have our numbers. If you want to ask, how will this impact you? Is this something that's actually done? Can I see something? We'll have that conversation. But please don't just go with the winds of what's politically trending and throw us under the bus for something that may not even be going on. I ask that we stick to factual, education-based topics and subjects that help our students succeed. That's all we want. I don't want to get into the rhetoric of the political division. So, thank you all for this opportunity and this time to talk with you and good luck in session. I'll see you in Palm Beach County days.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you up there. School board member, Andrews.
And thank you so much. And I'd like to say to the delegation, you've always understood. You've done a great job in Tallahassee. And I always appreciate you understanding equity. When I was elected to the school board some 10 years ago and we began to ask you to go back and petition for our students, our communities, you always brought home the bacon. We've been in this pandemic now with so many students that have unfinished learning and mental and social and emotional needs. You understand that. So, when the word equity keeps coming out, you know what that is. We are a rich county in Palm Beach County, but we have pockets of poverty. You understand that. You have taken that message back to your colleagues in Tallahassee and you have brought home the bacon. I must say that when I just came to South County about a year or so ago and I asked you about a CDL program, the need to make sure that we could have some training in the Glades region. Representative Caruso, you said you were gonna make that happen. All of our senators, Senator Polsky, Representative Skidmore, Bobby Power, all of you, Rick Roth, you brought it home for us. Right now, we have our own Palm Beach County School District West Tech CDL program. When you look at television today, you know it's a critical area where we're trying to get goods and equipment to places so that we can eat and get furnishings and everything. But we don't have truck drivers. You brought it home to Palm Beach County, to West Tech, when we asked you to do that. So, when I think about Palm Beach County and I think about equity, I'm thinking about our children. You have all kinds of children that have different needs. We've got to make sure we meet children where they are. We've got to meet communities where they are. And I'm just impressed to know that you're the Palm Beach County delegation because when we ask you to look at our priorities and what when we ask you to look at our priorities and what we need, you always respond in a positive way. So I know that we're in a different place right now in the country with a whole lot of things happening, but I feel comfortable that you're going to stay on task, to know that we have a lot of work to do to get our kids back because we talked about some of them are still missing. We're talking about some of them with unfinished learning and mental health issues and threats that you hear because of the climate of many times what's happening in the country and around the world. We've all got to come together and work together. But when I've always asked you, and being the board member for Palm Beach County, I recognize when you go to Tallahassee, you fight for us to get it done. So sitting here and listening to all the things we're asking for, I know you pay attention, and I do recognize you'll make it happen, and I'll see you too on Palm Beach County Day, as I see all of your colleagues from across the state asking them to help us. And thank you for CDL. The big red trucks are coming. We're making it happen in so many ways. Welding, HVAC, electrical, you did all of that over the last years that I've been sitting at your table because we ask you to. And for academics and funding, you've done it. So thank you.
And the county awaits those truck drivers.
Thank you. They're coming.
Any other members? Yes, you were recognized.
Thank you. So I have a few different points to bring up. The first one, Mr. Burke mentioned about virtual learning. So that's the one good thing that came out of COVID was having the opportunity for students to learn virtually as well as for us to have meetings that were virtual. And we would love to have the opportunity, as Mr. Burke said, if there was a hurricane and a school had to close, if there was an emergency, to be able to pivot to virtual learning so that students don't miss out. That would be wonderful. Also, with regard to our meetings, I know that the legislature did help us with allowing our advisory committees to meet virtually and in person. I would like to throw out one other thought, if it gets readdressed, which we haven't talked about as a group, but our school advisory committees struggle every year to get parent participation. It would be wonderful if school advisory committees could meet virtually and have that option. You know, parent participation is the catchphrase that you are hearing around the country, and I think that that would help us to hear the parents' voices at the school level. With regard to student funding, as you heard my colleague Ms. Ayella mention about, you know, our per-student funding, it's not only our teachers. The teachers are the backbone of our education system, but it is our bus drivers, our maintenance workers, our food service workers. My son, who you've heard about, who's autistic, high-functioning, he works in a school, he leaves in the morning at 5:00 in the morning and works the second job and gets home at 10 o'clock every night and works all day on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, and he still can't afford to buy a place or rent a place in Palm Beach County because of what he gets paid. And I'm asked all the time in the community, "Why aren't we paying our teachers more? Why aren't we paying our bus drivers more? Why aren't we paying our food service, school food service workers more?" And the answer just is the funding that we're getting. So you have to put a face on those items. And finally, about the divisiveness, you know, I hope we all find a way to work together. I was on a meeting last night where we were talking about antisemitism and the concerns that are happening all around the nation with antisemitism. They asked me about questions in our school district. I know that, you know, we have to make sure that Florida stays a safe place for everybody. And when we talk about equity, I immediately think of disabilities because that's my background. When we talk about equity, it's about all groups. It's not just the racial groups. It's religious, it's disabilities. We want to make our system the best possible system, and I think the discourse and getting it out in the open is going to make us work together better. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Brill. Appreciate that. Anybody else? I think we had Senator Berman first, and I'll head your way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that while we were sitting here today, Governor DeSantis proposed his education budget, and he proposed the continuation of that $1,000 bonus, and then he put in $600,000 to raise minimum teacher salaries for the third year in a row.
600 million.
600, I'm sorry, 600 million to 47.5, but there is nothing in here other than that bonus to address the issue of compression again. And I think that we, as a delegation, and all of us as legislators, need to address compression because we're losing our really good teachers who have the years of education because of the compression issue. And in the proposed budget, it's, the $1,000 bonus isn't enough to keep teachers. So I'd ask all my fellow legislators to really take a strong stand and make sure that we help our experienced, mature teachers and that we don't lose them. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Willhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Powell, you asked a question. My first year in the House, five years ago, this is my sixth session, I sat in an education committee, they said 32% of the schools, the teachers would leave the profession. So since I've been a House member, 32% of our teachers have left the profession in the state of Florida. We knew this five years ago. We know this today, and we've done nothing but make compression and create a problem. And this is just an ongoing division amongst our school, our public schools, and we'll call them our government-run schools by certain members of our colleagues. But here's the problem. The $1,000 bonus is creating division within our schools to begin with because why should a principal get $1,000 and not the vice principal? And I would ask my colleagues on the other side to talk to leadership and ask them why they're trying to divide amongst teachers within schools. Because the principal is working hard, and that vice principal is working just as hard too. And why they try and separate those two, to not give both of them, let alone, as we just heard, it's hard enough to get kids to school in buses because they don't have drivers. I see the numerous problems we have with our school police and hiring them. They're not getting the money. We're not getting, the food service workers aren't getting it. It's creating problems within our own schools. When one person gets in and doesn't, and we want to talk about equity, there's equity when everybody should get something out of that aspect and build everybody up and lift everybody up and help them within our schools. But the next problem I'll say is, the thing I will say is, and I appreciate the idea of virtual learning because every child learns differently, and I have two kids, and as parents, we all know that every kid is different. And my younger one, absolutely, he did, I just couldn't believe how well he did last year, from a year of virtual learning to now going back to the classroom this year, how much he did better from that one year that gave him self-confidence, built him up, helped him. He had more one-on-one with us, and it just helped him so much. So that option, when we do have hurricanes and problems in Florida, if we do need to turn on that option right away, we should have that. Or if there is something that comes up like this, we shouldn't have to wait for emergency orders for kids to learn, to stop learning because of problems like this. So I think virtual learning is a great option that you should be afforded and be in control of. When we talk about home rule, maybe there's something that happens locally that you need control of that. So we should have that, and that's a home rule option that you should have. But again, I really do appreciate it, and I ask that each and every one of you or your staff, as I sit on the Appropriation Committee, I sit on for education, if there's things you need or want to talk about or don't like what's being said at the meeting, because I've gotten a lot of calls, and I've talked to other school board members around the state that I talk to, not just my own, that are calling to me and thanking me for saying the things I do in committee about what's being said and trying to right things or the wrong things that are being said to try and correct them publicly. And so please reach out to me or anybody in my staff, and thank you, every one of you, for what you do, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And more questions?
Can I just make a comment about, I'm so glad you all are talking about compression. I think it's absolutely huge. So what I would just say is that, thank the governor for putting this budget together and for putting that funding out there, but just pass the funding to us, and we will pass it out to the right people in the right ways. We do this all the time. This is how we fund our schools in general, is we make sure that we pay our teachers. So we need to be able to have that control, to be able to actually decide who's getting the raises and how that's going to work. Finally, I just want to say, you know, this meeting is a really good example of kind of what's going on in the national politics, and I'm really hopeful that you all will not vote to support partisan races for school boards. I think it could be very detrimental to the schools in the state of Florida if we end up having people choose a side to be on. I think what we want from our school boards is to have people just that are going to represent the community and not have to pick a side and not have to choose which party they're going to be a part of. So I know that's one of the issues that's going to come before you, and I think we, as a state, have to have our local leaders come together so we can heal some of this division that we have. Thank you.
I've got, we've got, we're coming up to our close at 3:15. We've got 10 minutes. I still have to hear from the chairman. I give you, right, we've got five minutes until 3:15. I'll give you 30 seconds, Member Andrews.
Thank you, just a quickie. Just a quickie. Let's include guidance counselors and media specialists in that money. And also, I just want you to know that the turnaround for teachers is, has been three to five years, for years. I used to do teacher recruiting. We've got to get money to learn how to grow our own, beginning to pay substitutes, train them so that they can be ready to go into the classroom to teach, and getting our bus drivers and others at the lowest level training so that they can feel that they can stay within the profession. So there needs to be a bucket of money for that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Dr. Robinson, you've been quiet the whole time, so I saw your hand. 30 seconds, can you do it?
Yes, of course I can. So first, I do want to thank each of you for your support of public education. I just want to add the comment that teachers aren't leaving because of lack of money. Now, everybody deserves a living wage, but that's not why they're living, I mean, leaving. And I'd be happy to have any conversation about education with anybody, anytime. I can never do that in less than 30 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. I call on Chairman Frank Barbieri to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And one of the benefits of going last after my colleagues speak and that happens at the board meetings is, I'm very proud of them today. They brought up all the points that are very important to the school board. They did a great job of explaining some of our issues. But I want to tell you, as board chairman, one of my frustrations, and Mr. Roth, Representative Roth, this is not directed at you, but it's frustrating that people come to meetings with this idea that we're doing things that we're not doing. And it's, the social media lets that play on. I get emails telling us, you know, "Shame on you for teaching critical race theories. Shame on you for making the mask political. Shame on you for vaccinating our children." We're not, you know, forcing vaccinations on our children. I mean, you all got to help us stop that. When it starts in Tallahassee and you hear your colleagues talking about what the Palm Beach County School Board is doing, call us, and we'll tell you what we're doing. I'll make sure after this.
I just asked. Order.
Yes. I'll make sure that after this meeting today, for the board members that have no issue, we will provide you with all of our cell numbers, cellphone numbers. I'll ask you to get those back to us, your cellphone numbers. Feel free to call any of us during session. We'd be happy if you hear a rumor that we're doing something. Certainly, the superintendent will answer questions. We have the Chief of Staff here, Mr. Bobis. We'll make sure you have his phone number so he can answer questions. Our Communications Director is here, Claudia Shea. She's available. And I forgot to mention our Board Clerk and our Secretary, Tony Limbalata, and Board Clerk Carol Bass are here. Thank you all for everything you do for us, but they also can answer questions for you. But I just encourage you, because it is so frustrating to have people come into our board meetings with this preconceived notion that we're doing something that we're not doing, or to get the emails, hundreds of emails a week telling us to be, we should be ashamed of ourselves for doing something. I mean, I'd like somebody to show me where in our school system we're teaching critical race theories. Somebody just show me. I mean, it's like, I just want to see it. But I thank you all for your support. I don't remember which one of them said it, maybe more than them, but you've always helped us, and I can't thank you enough. It's one of the only meetings of the year that I'm looking forward to going to anymore because I know that you've always supported us, and even if we have differences of opinion, you're nice about it, you know? Nice is missing nowadays. Civility is missing in our meetings. People come to the meetings, instead of just telling us what their frustrations are, they beat on us about it. So I thank you all for being here today, and even with your differences of opinion that you're civil with us because that's sorely needed nowadays, and my colleagues and I have been beating pretty good over the last year. So thank you all for your support.
And Chairman, we thank you for your 20 years of service on the school board and your leadership as chairman and the work you've done over the last year especially. And Superintendent Burke, we look forward to your services, you know, and continued services. And, you know, members, you are all faced with a large task, a huge task, of educating our children and dealing with the challenges and the distractions that we've talked about today. And I want to, you know, in the interest of time, I could go on and on, but thank you. We know your heart's behind it, and we know that your number-one interest is our children, and your job is, it's huge in terms of what you've got to face and take on.